Okay.
Yep.
Let's, uh, Stanford will pledge. You want to do the honors, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Just a moment for, uh, keep our troops in mind and our first responders. Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a new application here in front of us. Application ZB 23005. Applicant is Fishkill Storage at 550 Westage Business Center Drive. Tax parcel is 6155-00866535. The zoning district is the Planning Shopping Center, four acres. Uh, I'm just gonna read this real quick and then you can come up. "The applicant is requesting the following variance for the construction of a four-story, 71,524-square-foot climate-controlled storage facility known as the Westage Self-Storage. The rear yard setback at 10 feet 2 inches where 100 feet is the minimum setback in the Planned Shopping Center zoning district, said variance will result in an 89-foot, 8-inch rear yard setback. Said request is a violation of Fishkill Town Code 150-48, Schedule of Regulations for Non-Residential Districts, 150, Attachment 22. The applicant is requesting the following variances for the installation of a wall-mounted signs for the four-story, 71,524-square-foot climate-controlled storage facility. An area variance of three, for three building-mounted wall signs where two building-mounted wall signs are the maximum in the zoning district. An area variance of 120.8 square feet where 65.25 square feet is the maximum allowed in their zoning district." Sorry about that. "Said variance would result in 55.55 square foot increase." Excuse me a second. Uh, said ver, uh, said request is a violation of Town Fiscal Code 150-43. Signs permanent signs within other districts, RB, PB, PSC, GB, and PI districts. The board will consider accepting and referring to the application scheduling a public hearing for a future meeting. Gentlemen, please identify yourself, please.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Southern Board of Appeals. My name is Neil Alexander, a partner of the law firm of Kenny and Peter, to the right.
It's not on.
Some might say I'm doing a better job if it's not on. Um, in any event, uh, to my right is, is Bobby Patel from, from the applicant, Fishkill Storage. So actually, the journey, I'm screaming here, I apologize. Um, the journey for this started in August of 2022. Um, I think we briefly popped onto your agenda in January relative to lead agency circulation, um, for the project, which you, which you allowed to be the planning board, who actually last week, last Thursday night, adopted a seeker negative declaration for the project as you're, we're gonna talk about it tonight. Um, and they also granted preliminary site plan approval with a few conditions. So between our pre-application in August of last year, our formal application in October, a large part of what's happened, just to cap you up, is we spent an incredible amount of time. The project originally started out as 76,000 square feet. It's down a little, it's been shaved down a little bit to about the 71,000 we were just talking about, on the same number of floors. Um, but what's really happened is an incredible amount of time has been spent, um, reshaping the building, much more square and much less rectilinear. And a large part of it, is there a pointer? I forgot my pointer. Okay. A large part of that has been...
Try to use your finger on the touchpad if you want to move the mouse or something.
Okay, I can try that. Let's see if that does that a little bit. It's very small. What happened is, is it, there's, because of the stream corridor that wraps around this property and a federal wetland in the front, that, um, is a result of an oddity that it got created, really. It didn't exist if you look way back on aerials, but it is federal wetland jurisdictionally now. A lot of time was spent reshaping the building and moving it around within the wet areas at the rear and the side. So we had originally come in actually looking to put the building about 54 feet off of the rear setback. And so what has happened since is that through the massaging and the finesse and the dialogue with the planning board, we're now down to only an 89, 89.2 feet away. So we really reduced that variance from what was originally asked and originally designed. What some of this reshaping did in order to keep all the grading, the stormwater features and everything out of that 30-foot setback for the stream is, it's kinda squared our building up, not to the front of our property. It kinda, it didn't even really square us up, and I can show you on a better, I think if I jump right here. And maybe I may need to go in a little bit. It kind of, oops, sorry, I'll get this right. It squared our building up, really, to the pond and not to where people are coming from over here. We don't have a problem with it, but it also meant that our entrance was moved to the side. So there were some trade-offs here which are gonna tie back to particularly our, our sign variance request that we're gonna get to in, in a second. So we optimized the rear yard and allowed, and pushed us farther away from Interstate 84 and the 100-foot back, uh, setback. It's also worth noting, just in passing, that, um, our, if you compare us, and I'm not sure if I can do this on this shot here, but the, um, you can see that our, the right-of-way for 84, where I'm trying to move my mouse, is much wider here than it is down at, uh, over here near 300 Westage. It's much narrower. So the net is, we're even, we're significantly farther back than you, than you would think otherwise. Thank, yes, please.
Is that Residence Inn? I'm just trying to...
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, great, great point. No, great point. This is Spring Hill and Residence Inn, correct. And this is Caremount now Optum. At least I didn't say Holding after that, in any event. Uh, so basically, yes, you come in off of nine, all the way on the far right of the page. Um, you come in through Westage Drive and, um, you go past Spring Hill Suites and then the road comes right to our site, pat, right here. And so we originally had proposed coming into the, a parking area in front. The building was gonna be farther back and our front door would be here. As a result of the requests of, of the planning board and what they asked us to sort of triangulate around with regard to the wet areas, our, and making the building a little smaller, making it square for self-storage, we were able to get the square footage, we were able to get the number of units that we need in the building in order for this to be financeable and successful in, in that regard, while keeping, we even talked about going up a couple stories for a little bit of time as we were playing with what's the way to do this. And we got it back down to the same height as, 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 as the other buildings in Westage. But the real net-net is that you're coming in on the side and you're entering our building on the side. That allows us to be 89.2 feet off, but it creates our need for three signs. And that's where I'm gonna go to next. We had, oops, hold on. So this is the current site plan, which we were just talking about with the crossing, and you come in on the side. Now, the planning board did help us by granting a waiver, um, of number of parking spaces consistent with the instituted traffic engineers ratios and their other experiences in town. So we're not getting more than anyone else, but they were willing to give us that same waiver, which lowered the number of parking spaces. But again, and let me see if I can get to the right one. We also spoke with Joel about if we took this Cube Smart announcement, which is on the side, right? And we pushed it to the corner here with the self-storage, would we be able to call that one sign? And he said, no. Okay, so we need three signs. We need one at the front, here, that says self-storage. There's one at the back from 84. And then we need one that announces it to the customers, that, yeah, you came down the right driveway for self-storage and you're getting to the Cube Smart. And candidly, in order to attract a national brand like Cube Smart to do this, they need to have an, an announcement. Our two self-storage signs in the front and the back, together, use our allocated 65, essentially use our allocated 65 square feet. So essentially, let me see if I can get you a better shot here. I keep seeming to jump over. So the self-storage in the back here and the self-storage in the front are each about 32 square feet. And they use our 65 square feet that were allocated and the two signs were allocated. So the last sign we're asking for is really the brand sign. And it's 65 square feet, roughly, my, but the number of precision's in our submission. And that is really the ask on the signage, and I believe it's sort of driven, to a certain extent, by the fact that we massaged from 54-foot back setback to 89 feet. And instead of entering in front, you're entering in the side and therefore we need that third sign for the brand. Now, what I think is also important, and is, we did this little study here of where would you see that sign? So it's over 800 feet across an existing parking lot, across the pond before you get to what is the, where Toll, the Toll residences are, that, that, for, that aspect of merit. It's over 500 feet to the rear of Westage. Remember, this was one lot in Westage split in, um, I'm sorry, of Caremount. This is one lot in Care, it was split in two for Caremount. And then, really, again, this goes back, you know, where do you really see this other than inside our property? Is potentially this back parking area for Spring Hill. And they'd be seeing it at about 200-plus feet away. And we do have some plantings, but, you know, but it, and they have some plantings. But that, that is really who will see it. And, and in the end, really, the hardship-driven aspect here is that we work to optimize the building's location. We need the third sign for the brand. Very few of people outside of those who are coming to, need, there are going to see it. It won't have a broad impact on others, but we need it to attract a high-quality brand. They're not gonna have an unbranded building. And that's really the essence. I think I covered most of it. Okay, I'm just checking.
Okay, I got a couple.
Please.
Is a marquee going into this community, into this, uh, facility, right, into Westage?
So we, we also are having a freestanding sign for us at the beginning of the property. There is that.
Right, that sign on Route 9 is a marquee.
Oh, back, all the way back there?
Right.
Yes.
Then there's signs throughout the facility, so which building is, so you're gonna have signs throughout?
There's some wayfinding. It's, it's more by number, if I remember, I think I'm right.
Well, right now, the buildings are numbered. I was just wondering how they're gonna designate your building. Is it gonna say Cube Store, Cube Smart, or is it gonna have a number?
I think it's the number, it's a number. I think Westage uses the number 550.
550?
550 for us.
And then, I presume at the front of the driveway, you're gonna have...
We are gonna have a monument sign here.
And you're gonna have 550 with Cube Storage there?
Uh, I, let me pull it up, I apologize. So that's B...
Yeah, where E is, right.
Yep, let me get to E, hold on. That is, yes, with the man, right, exactly.
You might wanna put 550 on that so people know.
Yes, we can do that.
I have a question, Ron. Uh, as far as parking, how many spaces do you allocate for...
They, we were given a parking waiver to eight parking spaces.
And that includes employee parking on...
That's, yes, for everything, yes.
And that will be around the building or in the front of the building?
That is on the side of the building, that is back. Sorry if I didn't make that clear. That is right here.
Now, looking at this...
Yes.
84 is in the bottom of the screen.
That is correct.
Now, where are these signs gonna be on your building?
So...
In reference to this diagram.
So let me, let me jump to a better drawing that has that marked out. So B1 and B2 are the self-storage signs. They're not quite that tucked in the corner for B2. B2's a little bit more to the left, and I can get you the rendering. Let me jump, let me see if I can jump to the rendering.
More in the middle of the...
Here it is, over, right above there.
So 84 would be, like, to the left of the picture?
It, no, 84, uh, yes, you are correct. I apologize, you are correct.
I actually drove by it, so, um, on my way here, so, and you're, and the renders are correct. You really can't see much from 84, you know, at least this time of year, so...
Right.
I, I do agree with that. Um, now, you do not have clearance to cut down those trees to 84, correct? So that foliage is still gonna remain?
That will remain because, as, as you note here, you have the stream corridor and then you actually have 84's right-of-way.
Is that stream redirected, and you may not be able to answer this, is that stream redirected because of 84? That doesn't happen with this.
So I, my, my colleague who will be here, who's, who's from, um, Chasen Engineering will be able to answer that better, but I actually think, and I'm going, don't hold me to this, but it was redirected twice before 84 even came around.
Wow, okay.
I think there was a plan for a, for a state highway that preceded the plan for Interstate 84, and there was some movement of it related to that, too. I was looking back in the deeds, I, I was having trouble sleeping, no, just kidding.
So Residence Inn, um...
Yes. Let me give you that perspective again.
That's gonna be a little bit from 84, that's a little bit further back.
That, it is, that is correct.
So, um, so in that sense, it's, it's kind of like, you know, there's foliage there and you really can't see, and honestly, you can see it better eastbound than you can westbound.
Yes.
It's almost like you're kind of looking over your shoulder to see the Residence Inn, but...
And we're sitting a little lower, I believe, we're sitting, we're definitely sitting, our sign sits lower on our building than their sign does. Um, and I believe it's smaller, I'm, I won't...
Does Cube Smart as a brand have requirements?
They do.
They do.
They do. This is, this is through their, our, we got our signage directed to us through their signage consultant as to what they thought was...
So the sizes and everything of this is coming directly from Cube Smart?
This, yeah, it's, yeah. I mean, we had a little bit of sway to try and say we need the Fishkill version of this, which is to push it down a little bit.
Okay.
So we were able to, it's definitely not the pattern you would see in Five Burrows, right? Um, so we were able to get some adjustments, um, for that, but, or even in, in White Plains, where they have a facility, um, on a smaller, lower building. But, yeah, we, we've tried and we finessed it, and that's why, you know, we were able to put self-storage on the front and the back, smaller, all lowercase. But the, near that front door, that's, and that's the one that needs the variance, really, candidly, is, is the two, the front and back of the building, or they call it the north and the south of the building. That's, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't need to come here if that's all we needed. What we need is the brand to be satisfied in order to get them to be our operator. Um, and, you know, I, at the risk of, you know, shooting myself in, in the foot, we recognize it's really about them feeling that they have their brand presented and seen, and it's really for the customer, 'cause I think you're really much more a committed customer coming down the road before you're gonna see it, as, except for the few people who park on the back of, of Spring Hill Suites.
So the purpose of the one facing the highway is just that, they want to be visible from the highway, even though it's probably six months of the year that you're gonna be able to see it? That's their request?
Yes, and they, and also, um, we were able to finesse that it said just self-storage, a little bit less glitzy. That was the finesse we were able to sort of put on it. It doesn't say Cube Smart Self-Storage, it just says self-storage.
How many units do you plan on implementing?
I, do you remember the number?
They're still figuring out.
Okay. And one more, I'm sorry, the soon's good, the sign's gonna be illuminated, I would imagine.
Yes.
Is access to the building all around?
No, there's only access on that. That was part of the positioning. We only really have access on one side. I mean, we have fire access and we've worked through that issue, but, um, no, we don't, we...
So let it burn, kind of.
Yeah, 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 no, we've worked with the fire department on that and we've figured out how to do our stormwater maintenance with limited access as well.
So that means if aggressive, you're in the back corner and a fire breaks out in front, it's gotta...
I'm not the architect, so I'm sure it's meeting code as to what, whatever that lineal distance that you're allowed for a hallway and a self-storage. Yeah, it's also gonna be, it's also gonna be sprinkled. But, but, yeah, you're on the right path.
What?
Yeah, yeah, I hear you, exactly.
Is it, is that, like, the, is the lighting inside, is that what it's called?
Um, let me see, I can pull up the specs. I don't know if I know the answer to that question.
Is it part of, if I understood correctly, it had to be made down with...
What's illumination of these signs?
Yeah, I don't, I know it meets the landscaping, I know it meets your lighting and landscaping code, but I don't know how far the photometric goes.
That came over one of the other, one of our earlier, uh, uh, submittals was the, the illumination of the signs, you know? We don't wanna see it from space, you know?
Yeah, no, I, I, it definitely will, it definitely, we, I know we're complying with the sign ordinance for, relative to that aspect, um, but I don't know exactly the, the...
It's now with these LEDs that are very bright and, you know?
I will check with our engineers for, assuming we're having an August public hearing, that we try and get some semblance of a photometric of, you know, in and around, when does it dissipate to under a foot? Candle.
And if it, if the brightness diminishes, like, in the middle of the night when there's not a lot of people out there, because I know that is sometimes, I'm gonna be more about wildlife and birds and getting confused with the lighting and...
Yep, no, we can, we can find out about, um, having a programmatic so it's dimmable.
Is anybody else having a...
Was there a lighting plan or was the lighting discussed at the planning board?
So we have preliminary site plan approval, but we hadn't gotten into all of that level aspect yet. I think that's something we would be returning about, that, I don't think, I'm trying to remember if we had. I don't think we got to that level yet. But we can, relative to the signage and the interaction, we'll get a, we'll get a rough sense of, sort of, um, is, is the, you know, for, what, what's our safety lighting around the backside, right? I think what I'm seeing is two small pack lights over here and a pack light here and two more here and two on the back here. So I don't think it's heavily lit by any stretch, but... That's right, we did, you're right, I apologize, you're right. So we'll, we'll get a better answer for you.
For the building lights, that's what I was talking about.
Right.
Yeah. Maybe we're just adding in that information, thank you.
Yeah. But they'll interact, right, a little bit. I said the sign and the building, depending on where the packs are, they could interact a little bit. So we'll try and get a handle on that, but I, I know the intention is just, you know, to have it lit to meet our insurance requirements and, and that's about it.
You don't want people wandering around, parking, driving around the whole lot, looking for you, but...
Exactly.
At the same time, not a lot of people, I'm assuming, are gonna be out in the middle of the night. Although, that's true.
We would like to keep it, keep it not in that way, right?
Blazed eyebrows, yes.
Storage in hotels are 24 hours.
You did, you did give us a photometric plan for...
This is that?
We did, okay.
That's good to know.
No, thank you, Debbie. I probably can't, and I probably can't pull it up right now because...
No, we have to, again, back to those other drawings, right?
Yeah, well, we will...
If you submit the last set of site plans you gave to the planning board, that should suffice.
Yeah, thank you for looking that up, I appreciate that, it's really helpful.
I know we wouldn't have given you preliminary without it.
Fair enough.
Now, this, uh, these signs are significantly larger than, it comes, it's an excess increase.
I'm sorry, I got too many inputs at once there.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
I, I think we were, just wanted to make sure it's clear. This isn't open 24 hours, I, I think there was just some...
That was my question.
Yeah, yeah, it is not open 24 hours, and I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Chairman, while we were...
I'm sorry, I was, um, my thought here.
I apologize.
Uh, these signs are, uh, they come, they'll be coming under excessive, an increase of the size of the sign, you know?
Yes.
And I was wondering if you can consider making them smaller? Because it seems like everybody else wants these huge signs. We, we, it seems like everybody comes in front of us, wants these big signs, you know? And, uh...
So the, the, other than the Cube Smart, I would say they are pretty small. I mean, gotta remember the size of our building here.
Well, compared to the building, you know?
Yeah, if you look at our building, I mean, here's, here's the rear of our building.
That's not what we look at.
No, I, I understand, I understand it. So, so I think, you know, we tried to, if you look at it, we have an architectural feature, right? Because if you, if you put that sign just on the back of that building or the front, and we'll go to the front in a second, it's what, 32 and a half, 32-ish square feet? If you put that sign in the middle of the, of our building, it would just be completely lost, right? So we put it inset in our architectural feature to help it stand out a little bit and to give it a little bit of pop there. So making that one smaller at some point just doesn't make a ton of sense. And they want that sign from 84. They want some presence from 84. So it's, it's gotta be, even if it's seasonal, it's also gonna be legible from 84. I mean, so I think making that one smaller's tough. And like I said, I mean, you're talking about the front sign, and I'm having a little bit of trouble doing, moving through these. There we go. The other one, if you look at B1 again, same size as, as B2 that we were just talking about, again, it's very, you know, it's very timid relative to the facade it's on and the length of that building. I mean, if the architect were here, they could rattle off exactly what that aspect of, of the massing of the facade is, but it is four stories here.
And you can't put, you can't put Cube Smart Self-Storage on one, one side together? You have no, you don't wanna do that?
So we had, we had talked about smushing it and wrapping it around that corner, I think.
Well, I'm saying as opposed to wrapping it around a corner, just putting it on one side.
I think the problem is, is if you go back to, and I'm trying to find the right plan. If you go back to, let's see, I think here. Which sign do you lose? I mean...
You have B1 and A, you combine them on one side.
But then if I put it, if I put, if I put B1 with A, then I have literally no sign on the front of my building.
I, I have a question and I thought I had clarity and now I'm confused with it.
Okay.
So, in looking at this, it's, you're, you're asking for 120.8 square foot total for all three?
Correct. Which means that essentially the Cube, the B1 and B2 don't need anything from you. The E doesn't need anything from you. It's A.
E for an add, yours for an add.
That means, A needs, needs it for, it's, essentially, it's total square footage, maybe minus one square foot. And it needs it because it's a third sign. Right? And then that's why I tied it back to candidly, right, the balancing test. Detriment to the community, benefit to us. It's all benefit to us, it's our, it's our way of getting our brand, meaning, as, as the developer, it's our way of getting Cube Smart to do the deal, is this sign, we need an announcement that they exist, and then the harm to the community. My point is, if that's what they need, it's not really like a lot of people are gonna see that sign.
And the A is self-storage?
A, a problem?
The A is gonna just, the A is the self-storage.
Correct, correct, correct.
So you're asking for the self-storage? Excellent.
No, I'm just asking for Cube Smart. So if I go back, sorry, I'm on the wrong drawing again. Okay, so B1, B2, and E are fully zoning compliant, they would not be here.
Yes.
What? Oh, I'm sorry, I did not follow you, I apologize.
That's okay.
A says Cube Smart.
A says Cube Smart, correct. Gotcha, now I, now I understand what the, so, the sign that's really at issue...
Is the one you, you want.
Is this one.
That's the primary sign you want.
It's the one we need, it's the one we need, really. And that's why, I'm, before you even think about the four prongs, just start all the way at the top, the balancing. There's really, the, this is what we need to get Cube Smart as a tenant in the top five in the space nationwide here. It's their requirement to be here, right? And the detriment to the community goes back to that drawing, which is what our, our, our point is, there really isn't one.
I think my, my bigger concern, if you could... I think my, my bigger concern, if you could call it a concern, would be, you know, dimming the lights at night, again, going back to, you know, wildlife and everything that are trying to get their bearings when we're all asleep.
Well, it's pretty remote, I think, too. There's no real residences around there.
No, but there's, I mean, it's a forested area, so there's going to be birds and whatnot.
I think the photometrics are going to, that we did submit, that I was reminded you submitted. All right, well, I think they'll bear that out. I think they'll bear that, and if for some reason that on their own, they're not, we will talk to the engineers to talk to the lighting consultant to confirm that they can be, they can be dimmable. I don't think that's an issue at all. I'm hopeful, actually, that they're so low already that we don't even have to go there.
I'll be honest with you, I'm struggling with that. I understand, you know, your need for that. It's the size of that that I'm struggling with. Do you have a, is there an emblem or something like that that CubeSmart has?
Well, let's, I like this photo. I don't believe they do. We can investigate if they have an emblem, but I mean, I think that only becomes additive. I mean, I hear you, so. When you talk about the prong, when you talk about the prong of the, of the variance test that talks about substantiality, right? Courts have been really great. There's a great case, coupon case that came down out of Rockland. Great case, talks a lot about, and one of the cases it cites within that, that decision had to do with the Ada Lot property in the town of Bedford, down in Westchester. And one of the, the court went on at length, and we can share the quote about substantiality, but what, what the judge went on to say, and it's really important, is it's not looked at in a vacuum. It's not a mathematical analysis. There has to be an actual harm associated with the, and the impact of the increase that the variance is being sought, before you start saying, is it substantial? It's, it goes back to the harm, not to the mathematics.
What was that case referring to?
I think that case had to, trying to remember. I think it had to do with square footage on a property for an estate, I think, if I remember right. But I'll, I'll look it up. I could be completely conflating it with something else. But I can get you to the decision. But the case law in New York is replete in talking about substantiality as a prong, that you have, first, you actually have the harm before you can say it's substantial. And what I would argue here is you don't really have a harm by the bigger sign, because it's going to be seen by so few seeing it. And what I'm worried about, candidly, is if you start playing with the dimensions of the sign, you really just got to go back to this drawing. It's not big. It's really framed within that architectural feature.
It's not so much a bigger sign, it's, it's just another sign. Like, am I not thinking of that correctly? Like, I'm, I'm, like, okay, you have the other two signs, they're within.
Right, which, so that goes.
But you're wanting to add another sign so that people can.
And I need square footage, too. I need the square footage for that sign. But it goes back to, I think.
Right, for that sign, but the other signs fall within.
Yeah, they're fully compliant. We're really here for one sign, but they all sort of, right? But I think that goes back to the beginning of our discussion about, I don't face front. That's my other problem. As a result of moving the building 40 feet forward, tilting it, getting the grading done, honoring the other environmental attributes, but the planning board, I don't face front anymore. I face literally like 45, 40 degrees off northwest from my actual front door. So now I'm desperate to have a, plus, I'm not even entering my front anymore. I'm entering on the side, so I really need a side on this, sign on the side. Part of putting this facility here is wanting some brand awareness of existence from 84, too.
You're only going to see CubeSmart from westbound 84.
I don't even know if you're really even going to see it from there. You're going to see it, it's really CubeSmart's there, not from 84.
Self-storage from 84. CubeSmart, you'll see within the parking lot.
Yes. But I still would need, I mean, I don't want to do the math in my head, but I still would need if each one, the CubeSmart sign is 56 square feet, so, and it's, it really looks right on the facade. So I still would need, you know, at least 20 square feet over what I'm allocated anyway. I think the reality here is that the distinguishable feature here for when you have someone else, you know, via night, via Melken, right? This isn't substantially similar to others, right? We worked with the planning board to position the building in a way that caused a need for the third sign. The third sign is an announcement sign primarily for the user who's entering the building on the side as opposed to entering it straight on, and it helps orient them. You know, they find us maybe by the freestanding sign, they find us by search engine, right, by the website, they're, you know, but when they're driving in past Caramount, they'll find us freestanding sign, but then how do they know where the, you know, they come down the aisle, they need to know to go to the.
Where am I going?
And am I at the right one? Am I at the right one? Right, we're not the only one in the, in the marketplace, so.
Especially because there is, and I'm happy to see it anyway, a lot of trees.
Right.
Salvaged because of the repositioning of the building.
Yes. Right, the limited disturbance is much smaller. Yeah, well, well said.
So essentially, when you pull, when you're pulling up with your car to it, you almost, it's almost like you have two, the corner is the front of your building as you're approaching it.
Which is, exactly, which is why we talked to the building inspector as to, I may not get there the right way. Hold on, it's going to take me through tries. We talked about the notion of pushing them so close together that they became one sign, right? And in order to reduce the variance asked to just square footage and not number of signs, and we were told that even with a wrap, even if it were wrapped, that that would be considered two signs, because it would have announcement on two facades. So hence, the more conservative approach.
I do have a question, not signed, but it looks like there's a lot of area to turn around, and is that because you're expecting, like, trucks or move, moving U-hauls?
No, so we had it for fire. We had to have an appendix D hammerhead built into the design.
I think we beat that to death. Any more questions?
Yeah, keep in mind, it's not, this is not the public hearing. This is, this is to accept it, and if there's anything further you need from the applicant, let the applicant know.
So I guess we should make a motion to accept the application?
I'll make a motion to.
And set it on for a public hearing on?
August 15th.
That's okay.
Want to accept and refill around the Dutchess County Department?
Yeah.
Please.
We'll accept the, I need a motion to accept the, the application.
Motion to accept.
All in favor?
Aye.
And schedule a public hearing for next, next month? And planning board's lead agency, is it?
Secret is complete.
Secret is complete? Okay, so is, is that all we need to do at this point?
Yeah, again, you can make it in three motions, or you can make it in one. The motion would be to accept the application, put it on for a public hearing on August 15th, and to send it out to the county for the GML referral. You can make that motion, make it nice and clean, and all three things on it.
David is great with the. So who wants to echo what David said?
Yeah, I can't read it at all. Anyway, I got it.
Do we have a second?
He's got a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much. See you next month.
See you next time.
Thank you. Yeah, and we'll get the, we'll get more, we'll go back over our illumination.
Thank you, Neil.
Yep, enjoy the nice weather for a change.
Do we have anything else? Nothing else on the agenda? Do I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
I second.
Do I have a, do I have a first?
Isabel, I have. Yes, I made it.
Second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Enjoy my time.
All right, I'll call you tomorrow.